Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the August 7th meeting of the Planning Board of Dobbs Ferry. I move that we open the meeting. Do I have a second? All in favor? Okay. Um, the first item on the agenda was 200 Ashford Avenue. That's been adjourned until the September 4th, 2025 meeting. The second item on the agenda is 160 Ashford Avenue. This is a public hearing. I move we open the public hearing. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just suggest mentioning that the alternate is sitting with the board because we're lacking good people.
Okay.
That's fine. We have a quorum, but.
We have a quorum, but Chris is sitting because we don't have all our members here.
Good evening. My name is Steve Secon. I'm the architect working with the Grafflin family of 160 Ashford. And last month, we were before you for the pre-submission conference and we gathered a number of comments from the consultants, which we responded to and resubmitted drawings. And I'd be happy to summarize what those comments were, but I know they're in written form and I don't want to belabor the point, but I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
Has anything substantial changed since you presented it?
No.
Anthony, have they responded to your memos?
Yeah, generally we were fine with their responses. The only, the one reservation maybe we have is they did relocate the cul-de-sac system, the drywells further from the tree. It seems like it's a really large tree and the drip line may be much further out than that. So I think that might need some further attention and we would talking about maybe just making it conditional to investigate that prior to a building department, let's say, you know, to maybe find a better spot or maybe get an opinion of an arborist to, so they minimize the obstruction to the roots and cutting roots.
So we added language to the resolution for that, correct?
Right, and we've got that prepared as well, so.
Okay. And Bill, are there any open issues with your?
No, not that I know of. And again, I have a draft resolution for you to consider tonight.
Okay. So, so here's how we propose you proceed with that is that you're going, you're going to coordinate with the village arborist to minimize, well, we're proposing you coordinate with the village arborist to minimize the impact of that drywell to that tree, which hopefully will be a walkthrough and, you know, a quick discussion to the satisfaction of the building department.
Yeah, we could verify that in the field with the arborist, the location.
Is that a condition you're willing to?
Yeah, we want the tree to survive, of course.
Okay. Okay. Do any members of the board have questions or for the applicant?
We covered it last, last meeting.
So I move that we close the public hearing. Do we have a second? All in favor? Bill, would you read the?
Sure, I've got, I'll just be reading some excerpts from the resolution. Whereas Laura Grafflin, the applicant, is seeking site plan approval to construct an addition to the project. The subject property is located at 160 Ashford Avenue, section block and lot 3.90-62-23, the project site, and is in the MDR-1 mixed density residential-1 zoning district. Now for, now therefore be resolved, the planning board of the Village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based on the findings and reasoning set forth below, the applicant, the application for site plan approval is granted, subject to the following conditions. One, approved plans, except as otherwise provided herein, all work shall be performed in strict compliance with the plans submitted to the planning board and approved by the planning board as follows. Two, sky exposure plane diagram prepared by Steven Secon Architect dated June 18th, 2025, and include the following sheets. A, east elevation, B, north elevation and south elevation. Then three, plan set prepared by Steven Secon Architect dated June 4th, 2025, with a list of the various sheets. The following conditions must be met before the planning board chair may sign the approved site plan, to be known as the final site plan. Highlighting the next four items. C, the applicant must address to the full satisfaction of the village engineer, all outstanding stormwater, stormwater maintenance agreement, and engineering issues raised in the hearings and documents submitted to the board. D, the applicant shall pay, shall pay all outstanding consultant review and legal fees in connection with the planning board and review of this application. E, the applicant must demonstrate that the proposed planting plan meets the replacement of 50% of the total aggregate diameter of trees proposed for removal with new trees as per section 300-51 subsection I. If the required 50% replacement cannot be met, the applicant must pay the fee in lieu of the balance of the replanting requirement. And F, all proposed lighting must comply with section 300-41 of the zoning chapter. Then A, as just discussed, a new condition now has been inserted. The following condition, conditions must be met prior to the excavation at the site. A recommendation of the drywell location from a certified arborist must be submitted to the building inspector of the village and village engineer for approval to minimize impacts to the roots of the existing 42-inch tree. And B, the location of the drywell must be verified in the field. And that's, that's the, some sections of the resolution. Thank you.
I make the motion. Do we have a second? All in favor? Okay, and the AHRB resolution?
Okay. So whereas Laura Grafflin, the applicant, is seeking architectural and historic review to construct an addition, the property is located at 160 Ashford Avenue, section block and lot 3.90-62-23, the project site, and is in the MDR-1 mixed density residential-1 zoning district. Now therefore be it resolved, the AHRB of the Village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based upon the findings and reasoning set forth below, the application for architectural and historic review approval is granted, subject to the following conditions. One, approved plans, except as otherwise provided herein, all work shall be performed in strict compliance with the plans submitted to the AHRB and approved by the AHRB board as follows. A, sky exposure plane diagram prepared by Steven Secon Architect dated June 18th, 2025, and include the following sheets. One, east elevation to north elevation and south elevation. B, plan set prepared by Steven Secon Architect dated June 4th, 2025. And that's that.
I make the motion. Do we have a second? All in favor? Okay, good luck.
Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda is 17 Olive Font Avenue. It's a public hearing, so I move that we open the public hearing. Do I have a second? All in favor? Hi.
I'm not. You don't have the cord?
No.
I'm going to. I think I don't have a connection unless connected. I haven't yet. Can I turn it down a bit? Do I share the screen?
Yeah.
Hi, good evening. I'm Suzanne Levine. I'm project architect for 17 Olive Font Avenue. I'm here with Heather and Larry Lustig, the owners of the property. We presented to you last, last time at a pre-submission meeting. We're doing a second floor addition to an existing one and a half story home. And I don't think there were, there were no comments that I think we needed to address, so we're just back. And please let me know if you'd like me to go through the presentation again, or if you brought some samples of the colors we're using. Let me know what you'd like.
I think you were pretty clear last time. Anthony, there's no additional footprint to this, right?
Yeah, there was no engineering issue.
There are any planning issues?
No additional from us, yeah.
Okay, does anybody on the board have any questions or comments? Is there anyone here to speak to this applicant? I move that we close the public hearing. Do we have a second? All in favor? Okay. Bill, you want to read the?
Sure. Two resolutions here. One for site plan. And so whereas Lawrence and Heather Lustig, applicant, are seeking site plan approval to construct an addition, the subject property is located at 17 Olive Font Avenue, section block and lot 3.120-110-35, and is in the OF-5 one-family residential five zoning district. Now therefore be it resolved, the planning board of the Village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based on the findings and reasoning set forth below, the application for site plan approval is granted, subject to the following conditions. One, approved plans, except as otherwise provided herein, all work shall be performed in strict compliance with the plans submitted to the planning board and approved by the planning board as follows. Site plans, 12 sheets prepared by Christina Griffin dated February 6th, 2025, last revised June 17th, 2025, with a list of those various sheets. And several other conditions are highlighted. We'll speak to those. C, the applicant must address to the full satisfaction of the village engineer, all outstanding stormwater, stormwater maintenance agreement, and engineering issues raised in the hearings and documents submitted to the board. D, the applicant shall pay all outstanding consultant review and legal fees in connection with the planning board and review of this application. E, the applicant must demonstrate that the proposed planting plan meets the replacement of 50% of the total aggregate diameter of trees proposed for removal with new trees as per section 300-51-1. If the required 50% replacement cannot be met, the applicant must pay the fee in lieu or the balance of the replanting requirement. And F, all proposed lighting must comply with section 300-41 of the zoning chapter. And that's it.
I make the motion. Do we have a second? All in favor? And the AHRB?
So the HR, the H, AHRB resolution. Whereas Lawrence and Heather Lustig, applicant, are seeking architectural and historic review to construct an addition. The property is located at 17 Olive Font Avenue, section block and lot 3.120-110-35, and is located in the OF-5 one-family residential five zoning district. And now therefore be it resolved, the AHRB of the Village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based upon the findings and reasoning set forth below, the application for architectural and historic review approval is granted, subject to the following conditions. One, approved plans, except as otherwise provided herein, all work shall be performed in strict compliance with the plans submitted to the AHRB and approved by the AHRB as follows. A, plan set prepared by Christina Griffin dated February 6th, 2025, last revised June 17th, 2025. And that's that.
I make the motion. Do we have a second? All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for reapproval of the final plat and site plan for the proposed subdivision of two new single-family homes at 11 Lyman Place. I move that we open the public hearing. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Good evening, chairman, members of the board, members of the building department. Hope everyone's summer's going well. So I believe we're here for a reissuance of the, or reapproval of the subdivision plat, final plat, because we had some, we had a problem with the, the third-party water service provider, Veolia. So we finally got through, we've taken care of that, but we need the updated final plat now with a, a date that's permitted for the Westchester County Clerk's Office to sign with a new signature. So we're hoping we can get that relatively quickly and proceed.
Okay, and there have been no changes to the project?
No change, no changes to the project. Everything is as was approved back when we were here.
Okay. Are there any, any issues, Anthony, that you know of?
No, we don't have any issues.
Still?
And no other issues.
Yeah? Okay. One of the neighbors is concerned about the deteriorated wall.
We, 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 we understand, you know, and I believe we've, he's, it's the, it's the same neighbor. We understand, and it's fully on our radar. We understand that we have to address it. I believe this is a condition in the final plat for obviously any, any necessary repairs or whatever the retaining wall requires pursuant to code compliance. We're obviously got to take care of.
Okay. Would anybody like to speak to this application? Steve, anybody online? Okay, I move that we close the public hearing. Do we have a second? All in favor? All right, we have a resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, related to 11 Lyman Place. Whereas Ricardo Dos Anjos, Anhos, 11 Lyman Place LLC, the applicant and owner, is seeking final plat subdivision approval for the subdivision of the lot and site plan approval for this construction of two new one-family dwellings, one on each proposed lot. The property is located at 11 Lyman Place, section block and lot 3.60-22-3, and is look, sorry, and is located in the OF-6 one-family residential six zoning district. And whereas the applicant previously received a final plat subdivision and site plan approvals on June 6th, 2024, and both approvals have since expired. And now therefore be it resolved that the planning board and the Village of Dobbs Ferry adopted a negative declaration in connection with the project on May 2nd, 2024, and the planning board reaffirms the May 2nd, 2024 negative declaration. And be it further resolved, the planning board hereby finds that a proper case exists for requiring that a park be suitably located for playground or other recreational purposes within the village, and the planning board finds in accordance with section 300-52J, reservation of parkland, that a park cannot be suitably located on the property, requiring payment of a fee in accordance with the master fee schedule for the two additional residential units. Be it therefore resolved, the planning board of the, of the Village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based upon the findings and reasonings set below, set forth below, the application for final plat and site plan approval is granted, subject to the following conditions. One, approved plans, except as otherwise provided herein, all work shall be performed in strict compliance with the plans submitted to the planning board and approved by the planning board as follows. A, subdivision plat by Ramsey Land Surveying PC dated April 16th, 2024. B, civil engineering plans by Hudson Engineering dated August 15th, 2023, last February 2024. C, architectural plans set by Christina Griffin, last revised and May 20, May 22nd, 2024. Two, the following conditions must, must be met before the planning board chair may sign the approved final plat. The two that we're highlighting here are D, the applicant must address to the full satisfaction of the village engineer, all outstanding stormwater and engineering issues raised in the hearings and documents submitted to the board. E, the applicant shall pay all outstanding consultant review and legal fees in connection with the planning board and review of this application. Then also number three, expiration of final plat approval as per section 300-73. Final plat approval shall expire within a period of 90 days from the date of the resolution, unless granted an extension as per section 300-75. Four, the following conditions must be met before the planning board chair may sign the final plans. A, the applicant must, must receive final plat as required by section 300-71A. B, the engineers to inspect and provide a report regarding the condition of the rear retaining wall, as well as any necessary improvements to said wall. The report will be reviewed by the village engineer. And number six, the following conditions must be met before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. A, recreation fee. The applicant shall pay all fees in accordance with section 300-52J, reservation of parkland, that a park cannot be suitably located on the property, requiring payment of a fee in accordance with the master fee schedule for the one additional residential unit. And that's it. Thanks.
I make the motion. Do we have a second? All in favor? All right, thank you. Good luck, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. A quick question in form of a formality. Dan, we've met the condition for the signature?
Yeah.
So when, just for?
I'll pick it up next week sometime.
Okay, great.
Just email Sarah.
Yep. You can talk.
Second.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to the pre-submission conferences, section of the evening. 33 Main has been adjourned and will move to the September 4th, 2025 planning board meeting. 19 Livingston Avenue.
Good evening. Hi, this is Christina Griffin. I'm here with Paul Petretti, the civil engineer. I'm doing this on Zoom and he's there in person.
Huh? He's on this way.
And I believe the partners might be there as well, Big Suricchio and Adam Sokolich. I'd like to share the screen with everyone. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. We're here for a pre-submission to present our proposal for nine townhouses at 19 Livingston Avenue. This project is a cluster development in the MDR-1 zone, and cluster development is a permitted use in that zone. I am going to jump right to just a 3D view of the design that we have come up with for the site. Can you see the rendering in front, on the screen? Yeah. This is showing a, a street view of the proposed townhomes. They're two and a half story with entrances facing Livingston Avenue for six of the units. There's three sets of three attached townhomes. And they, there's a gentle slope in the front of the site, but as you go around the back, there's a very steep slope, and we'll, we'll show you some images of that as well. So these are just a few images. This is without the landscaping, to give you an idea of what we have in mind for the site. Also now I'm going to just go to a overview, looking down at the site. Okay. Okay, this is a view of the, of the development, showing two sets of three townhomes along Livingston Avenue, and then three townhomes in the back. We are going, we're planning to have a driveway on the right, which is actually an exist, there's already existing driveway. There's going to be an easement to allow access to the back of 29 Livingston, which is a five-unit multifamily house to the north here. And then as you go around the, the site, down the driveway, you can enter a parking area. There's going to be a two-car garage for each of the six units along Livingston Avenue. So you come up the driveway in the back to enter those garages. And there's going to be one, one car garages for the three units that are in the back. Each of those three units will have also outdoor spaces, and there'll be five visitor parking spaces. Now, in back of the site is a very steep area. And what we've done is designed, well, the, Paul Petretti has designed a retaining wall. There's two sets of retaining walls. Only 10 feet will be visible of the upper retaining wall and four feet of the lower. And this retaining wall separates the plateau, the platform that we've created for the development from the steep slopes area, which, which is a slope of 54% from the retaining wall going down to Metro North train tracks. And this rendering is on Google Earth, so there's a couple of very rough shapes here, but it is, is, the intention is to show you how this development fits in the neighborhood. As you can see, there's the, there are five-unit, two-unit buildings just to the north. The Ginsberg Development that go from, I think, two and a half stories down to five stories in the back. And then across the street, there's mostly one and, one and two-story houses. Some of them, I think, are two or three family homes. So there's a big variety of types of housing on the street. And then to the south, we have the Cabrini Nursing Home. So now I'm going to take everyone back to the drawings. Okay. I'm going to start with the site plan. Okay, this is our site plan showing the nine townhomes. The driveway to the north is a two-way driveway that provides access to the back of the site. I'm showing the driveways into the two-car garages in the back and the one-car garages on the units 7, 8, 9. These units are, each of them, each of the market units are around 3,000 square feet. There is one affordable housing unit, and that's this one number nine. Sorry, this is number. Yes, number nine. The, this shows also the parking area in the back. And then to the very left is a common area where we have the steep slopes. Between the common area and the parking is going to be a lawn area that's shared by all the residents. This is our zoning data. I'm going to blow up the zoning chart just so I can go over this with you. We are, in every way we can, comply. We are, in every way we can comply with the MDR one zone with the permitted use of cluster housing. We meet all the setbacks from the buildings to the outer property line. The maximum lot coverage allowed is fifty-four percent. We're at forty-seven percent for the whole site and at for the, by the buildings, the maximum coverage is at twenty-seven percent. We're at twenty-two percent. We meet all the context-based limits of the houses. And there's a chart over here on the bottom, I just want to point out, this is a calculation to show the reductions for steep slope areas. The, the site is one point two-nine acres and when we reduce the steep slope areas by, by following the zoning code requirements, we're at forty-five thousand one-thirty square feet. And then if you divide the amount of area permitted per, per unit of twenty-five hundred, we're allowed eighteen units, but we're proposing only nine. Let me just shrink this down a little bit. Next slide is our grading plan showing topographic information, showing a very gentle slope from Livingston Avenue to the back of the site, a drop of about one story, two retaining walls, the retaining, the green is the retaining wall that wraps around the, the west and the south sides, and then another retaining wall to show that step down to the steep slopes in the back. These lots actually will need a density waiver because three of the lots are under twenty-five hundred square feet. And then the zoning code, we are allowed a density bonus if we can provide open space that's protected. So we are doing that. We're going to have open space to the left that will be kept by the homeowners association and kept protected and open. And also the other requirement for a bonus density as we're going to make sure that all the units will be LEED certified. Next slide is showing our view platforms. We have designed this so that we have more than required setback to, to unit one and that provides some view platforms, one and two, along Livingston Avenue. We have eighteen feet between the two sets of three units to allow a view corridor between the buildings. And then a view four is allowing a view through thirty-four feet of setback between the property line and the unit six. Now, I'm going to give this over to Paul Petretti. He is our civil engineer. He has provided some slides of retaining walls. He wanted to discuss how he has come up with this design for developing the property. Let me get his slides up just a second, please. And then after he talks, I'm going to go back and show you the architectural drawings.
Christina, can you hear me?
Paul?
Christina. Christina, can you hear me?
Barely.
Okay, Paul, we have no idea where Paul is. He must be stuck in traffic or something. He's not-
Okay. It's okay, I can take it through. I can take the, I can show them presentation. All right. So what Paul provide, prepared for tonight's meeting is, he has a series of just images here of retaining walls. I believe he's designed these and he feels very confident that, that this is the way to, to, that we will have significant retaining walls, but he's designed it so that it will stabilize the site and provide a platform for this development right next to the steep slope area. So these are just some examples of his ideas and work. I'm going to go back to the civil engineering drawings just to show you. We have a slide here showing the retaining wall facing south. This is in two parts to fit on the drawing, showing the step down of the retaining wall along the property line, going from Livingston Avenue, which is this red, it says Livingston Avenue here on the right, stepping down and stepping down again towards the back of the site. Then the next slide shows the, the retaining walls that are in the back of the building and that's the green line here and then the yellow line below, and this is showing a view of that back wall. One retaining wall is seventeen feet high, but only ten feet will be visible. And then a lower, there's another retaining wall beyond that that's ten feet high and only four feet will be visible. This is just a continuation of that profile of that wall, looking from the west side of the property towards the development. And this is a section cut through the site. The section below is showing how, in green, we are, this is the new grade, we are providing gradual slope from Livingston Avenue through and around the buildings one through six, then creating a like five percent slope for parking and driveway between the two sets of buildings. And then in the back, there is a plateau that is fill, a lot of the site has fill and that's going to be taken out of the site and possibly re, re, reuse, recycled, if, if it has, if we can make it the right content and brought back onto the site to create this fill and a plateau for the development. And then we have our two retaining walls and the steep slopes area. These steep slope area and the green space before that will be open protected area for the development. Now I'm going to go to the architectural drawings. Here are the floor plans for the units, units one through six. They are two-bedroom, there are a total of three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath units with a garage, two-car garage on the, in the basement and a lounge area up on the half level. These are two-and-a-half-story units. Up at the third floor level, there'll be a lounge that opens up into a roof deck. On the rear, we have three units, that's unit seven through nine, and the unit on the left is our affordable unit that also has three bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths. It meets the requirement of eighty percent of the floor area of the market rate, of an average market rate unit. And it's very similar in design where we have, except that we have single-car garages for these. There is another space for each unit that will be an open parking spot. And we did this because first of all, we want all the garages and all the cars hidden behind the buildings, behind Livingston Avenue, so you wouldn't see them. But here, in order to get access from our driveway, we are, we are having access at the top of these townhouses and then you work your way down to the living room dining areas on the lower level and then up to the bedrooms above. The affordable housing unit will be twenty-four hundred square feet, which is just under twelve, two, four, four, six, which is eighty percent of the average floor area of the other, of the other eight units. These are our roof plans. And these are our elevations. The top are the east elevations facing Livingston Avenue. We have a combination of smooth cement panels and lap siding in somewhat modern look, but the shape of a gable roofs, dormers. Down below is the west elevation. This is when you're looking at the buildings from behind, so you see the two-car garages on the bottom and there are decks above, bigger deck on the first floor, smaller on the second, and the roof decks above. And these are our elevations looking from the south. And from the north, at the top level, you'll see dormers. On the south side, there is a very small dormer because we do need to make sure that we meet the sky exposure plane, which we do, we've done that calculation. You see down at the bottom, the east and west elevation, the, the house on the very end to the left, which is the affordable unit, fits within the sky exposure plane. And then over to the right in the west elevation, you'll see the house to the right that also fits within that sky exposure plane. This is our color scheme. We are, have a very neutral kind of color scheme. There's alternating colors of taupe, white and gray for each house. Each house has a slightly different color door as well. There's a little playful flipping of the different, of the orientation of the door, of the windows on the units. And, and now we're back to our slide, which is our last slide, showing the, the street view of the unit, of the proposed units. And that is the end of our presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Christina. We understand this project is quite complex from an engineering standpoint and there will need to be a lot of work and details done before, you know, any approval would be there, would, would be happening. One of the, just big picture, there is a lot of concern about viewing platforms and the impact this will have on the views to the river and the Palisades. We, you know, section three hundred dash forty-six in the code asks us to consider views to the Hudson River and significant view corridors and minimize any impact on those. So I don't know, Rob, do you want to speak to what kind of information might help us understand better what that, how we, how we get a handle on that?
Well, yeah, I mean, first of all, we should see if Paul wants, I think, now that he's here, if he feels like he wants to say anything that's part of the presentation.
Yeah. Paul, I, I feel like your engineering stuff is a little premature at this point. Christina walked through the walls and where they're going to go. You obviously have been through, you know, in much more detail, but I'm not sure we're even qualified to technically evaluate that kind, that level of detail of your work. But we, our engineering team certainly will and will need their assurances. Is there anything, big picture, that you feel like we should, we should know?
You want them to run through the drawings so you give them an idea of heights and all.
Christina just did that.
She did?
Yes.
She showed you the pictures of the walls?
She did.
So, you know, basically those kind of walls I built many times, different color schemes. It worked out pretty good.
I know this isn't your first time around on this property either, so.
Twenty-one years? Seriously?
So, yeah, why don't we, why don't we not go into detail of your, your stuff at this point? We have a big picture and, you know, this is where, where, there's going to be a lot of work that needs to be done in that regard in the future.
Excuse me?
Okay. Thank you.
So Christina, you're still there. I guess, yeah, so I guess there, at least for the, I mean, the three-dimensional, the kind of rough massing models that you showed on Google Earth were really helpful. We were certainly kind of missing that. I think that there's still a kind of, I'd say, there are two things. One is the, you know, it feels like they're, like we're looking at two different kinds of drawings that are at two different stages of the process, right? You, you understand what kind of a pre-submission set looks like, so your, your architectural drawings are still pretty abstract and so on. And Paul, you, you certainly know how to build retaining walls, so you've done like what looks like, you know, really detailed engineering drawings. So we have like these two sets of drawings and I guess, Christina, I would think since that, that you, first of all, should do some kind of site plan drawings or some representations of this project that pull all of this together. I still do not understand from what we have so far, but maybe that's okay. This is pre-submission and as you know, this is a, you have to, you're going to have to go through Seeker and it also, we're also going to have to manage the, the board of, you know, the board of trustees is going to be looking at this also. And what was suggested in Valerie's memo, and I think it makes a lot of sense, is in order to not go bouncing back and forth between us and the board of trustees, it was suggested that we have some kind of joint working session with the board of trustees to kind of think about the design and look at the design together. But I would say that right now, it's, it's very hard to, to understand the project. I, I don't know if we need, you know, I'm thinking about the work you just finished on Alafon, where you did all of these kind of studies to show how you were impacting the view of the neighbor who was behind. And this is a hundred times more sensitive in terms of the way it's going to be perceived by the neighbors who are on the other side of Livingston. And as Alan was just saying, you know, this is kind of a gateway site to the village. So I think that there's, you're going, we're going to have to figure out a way to show more kind of three-dimensional relationships between this building, these buildings and, and the, the existing ones. That in order to sort of, kind of move this along, even though it's kind of just pre-submission, I think it would be good to have some alternative layouts for how the buildings work on the site. I, I, I mean, a couple of thoughts that I have is, one is, I'm, I personally am not a fan of the kind of having the same size box kind of laid out and just kind of sawtooth in terms of their setback. I don't think that there's anything like that anywhere around in the, in the context. And I also think it doesn't really do justice to Livingston Avenue. I know in the previous schemes, there, you know, there was a, also, I think, I think it was also a timeout scheme, but the facade of the building, the attached building was, you know, normal to Livingston Avenue and faced Livingston Avenue and created more of a, of a kind of a, of a street wall there. And I think that having the buildings oriented the way they are now, as opposed to having them facing Livingston Avenue, I think is going to be a problem. I mean, we'll have to see what other board members feel and how the board of trustees feel, but I think that it would be smart to do some alternative configurations of the buildings. The other, yeah, the other thing is-
Totally open to that, of course.
The other thing, just a few other thoughts, the open space that you're, you know, part of the idea of the open space, the reserved open space, is not just open space for the sake of open space, right? The open space is supposed to be, presumably have some community value. I don't know that it necessarily needs to be accessible, but it seems to me that, that the open space that you're providing is the one at the, is it the one that's at the back of the site, the back of the parking lot?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you know, that, I mean, that's fine. I mean, maybe it meets the requirement, but I don't know that there's a lot of community value to having that open space there. And by community value, I mean, you know, the biggest consideration here is the, the view stuff, right? So I feel like there ought to be some alternative layouts to this site where the buildings are, like maybe instead of trying to create these kind of sliver views between the buildings that you show in the VUCA diagram, maybe the building should go back to being a more conventional kind of townhouse, you know, set of townhouse buildings that are closer to each other so that there's one like significant view that you get from Livingston Avenue that takes advantage of the fact that you have to provide this open space. So rather than having it tucked in behind the buildings, maybe that's the way to get the big view of the Hudson River as you come in, as you come into Dobbs Ferry. So I, I, you know, I, I, I think it's going to be important for you to have some other alternative ideas about the way the- alternative ideas about the way the buildings are configured on the site. And it's not, you know, you meet the den, you know, it's not a matter of how dense the site is. I don't have a problem with that, but-
Right.
I feel like right now, it's just kind of evenly distributed across the site as opposed to maybe, the whole idea of a cluster is to sort of get the buildings closer to each other so that you create some open space. And in this case, it would be open space that provides the big view. Instead, the buildings feel like they're kind of more or less evenly arrayed along Livingston Avenue. You don't really get, it would be better to get one kind of knockout view than the three kind of sliver views between the buildings that you have now. I mean, this is just my opinion or, or it's worth, that would be an alternative thing to explore. The other thing is, the other thing is, and I'm almost done, that the sky exposure plane, you should know, and I know that that was, I guess it was a big thing in contention, right? In the previous-
It's without the previous-
Yeah. The, 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 things have changed in that the sky exposure plane is a guideline and we have had several projects where we have, where architects did kind of weird things because they were just trying to conform to the sky exposure plane and it actually didn't make the buildings any better. Or they were in a neighborhood where every building to the left and right of them violated the sky exposure plane. I'm not inviting you to violate the sky exposure plane, but if you can make the site better and can make a good case for one of the sky exposure planes or another being mildly compromised, but it gives you this superior site plan, I would encourage you to, to look at that, you know, to consider it.
Yeah, I would support leaving that under, you know, the correct circumstances as well. And, and since this is such a sensitive site and it's functionally the southern gateway to the village, I do think some presentation that shows turning the corner onto Livingston, what that view would be as you drive down Livingston, and then also if you're walking down the sidewalk there, what those views would be, because that's really what the, the citizens of the village are going to see.
Happy to do that.
Now, the, the, the whole, the process here is, is can, I don't know, Bill, if you want to sort of take it, because the, or, or Dan wants to take us through kind of what the process is, because as Alan said, I don't know if it makes sense for us to dig in really deeply on, on this if you're gonna, you know, if we're gonna ask for some alternative layouts. Oh, I have one other question. How many parking spaces per unit are you providing?
There'll be two.
And that's required? That's what's required?
Yes.
So I think, given how close we are to the train station-
Yes.
I think that's another thing that I think the board of trustees and maybe this board would consider. Again, if it makes, if it enable, if it, if it opens something up in the site plan to have less than the two, you know, given how close we are at the train station, I'm assuming people are gonna, the whole idea of building this close to the train station is to have fewer cars and to have more people walking to the train station, which is just down the street. So again, with the sky exposure plane and the parking requirement, if losing a space or two out of the whole development or something like that cuts it loose in some way and enables you to do something better or more interesting with the site plan, then I think that would be worth considering.
Thank you. There are, you know, a lot of limitations because we are trying to keep development away from that parking area and the hill. So we are working really with the property that where the buildings are now and trying to meet the set box. So, uh, we will look at different ideas, but I just want you to know there isn't a broad range of options for this.
Well, there's certainly no reason why the buildings couldn't be, like, I'm, I'm not saying this is the way you should do.
Sure, yes, I know what you're about to say.
Like, you could theoretically smash all six of those buildings together, the ones that are now in two sets of three along Livingston Avenue and orient that new building, get rid of the sawtooth, have what is basically more of a sort of conventional, single facade townhouse look along Livingston Avenue, couldn't you? I mean, that's what was proposed previously and it looks like Paul's prepared to make whatever retaining walls he needs to do to make the site work. So I don't see, I don't know that, I think-
I think they, one of the premises we're working with is to try to avoid having too big a building that just has a big block, you know, that prevents the view. I think that this is a very different approach than the proposal that was made, what, ten years ago?
Right, so maybe one of the proposals-
So we don't want to have too big a building that is a solid-
I mean, I, I, you know, I don't know. Like, I, I think it depends if, if as a result of making a lot, or maybe one of the buildings goes lower on the hill and it's five buildings across the facade of Livingston, but it goes so far south that it opens up one real honest to God view at the south end of your site. I mean, I just think we're a long way from saying, this is what it is because of the technical constraints. I think you're going to have a problem with this site plan, the way it is now, at least with me.
I'm open to other options, Rob. I'm not saying, I'm not at all, I just want you to know, there are just so many, there are certain limitations, but I'm, I'm really open to thinking about these ideas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The one thing I'd like to add is, see the walls around there?
Mm-hmm.
That's basically the usable plateau. Okay. And indeed, okay. Going any further towards the river is definitely not something that helps the situation because all this material has to come out of here and we got to build these walls. And I'm actually putting houses on top of the hill. So basically, that's the plateau you have. That's it.
Okay, that makes sense. But for example, to just expand on Rob's idea, I mean, if you took, if you made it five across on the Livingston side and four across and moved all those four north, you would have one large viewing platform that would be fairly wide and expand, you know, because that would be, it would be wider down below. And maybe you could put a little parking, you know, where that viewing platform is. I know it's not our favorite thing to see, but, you know, for those plantings, there are ways to deal with it, you know, and that, and that would give you a maximum viewing platform as you turn onto Livingston. Just, just one option worth exploring perhaps.
I think there are, right, I think there are a bunch of ways to skin the cat. I mean, and I think even Paul, except the idea that this is the platform you have to play with, there's still, there are different ways of laying the buildings out here. There are different ways of laying the buildings out here, I might think.
No, no, I'm just saying-
Yeah.
Within the limits of your structure-
Within the limits, yeah.
Your platform.
I get it. It's not an easy site.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I can think of, of turning the buildings and there are ways we can look at it. We, the, the, you know, we want to keep the nine units because of the cost and the development, so we don't want to do less than that. But there, we will come back to you with different options so you can compare them and see what we, what's possible here.
Yeah. And I, and I'm saying that in part because that's what I would like to see, but I also know the board of trustees and Michael Patino in particular, formerly of the AHRB, I know that he's going to be interested in the same thing. So I just think it'll save you, um, time ultimately if, if you can still give, uh, some options and then we can workshop it with the board of trustees and hopefully that'll save time and effort.
Peter, Chris, anybody have any questions or comments at this point?
I mean, I'm glad the site's getting developed. I mean, I think this, you know, this, it's a kind of a, sort of a blight now. And it is, it is putting housing near the train station, so-
Right.
It checks off, it checks off those boxes. It just doesn't really, for me, check off the kind of urban design things that Alan was talking about of kind of creating a gateway moment somehow here.
More, more technically, you've seen the, uh, engineering memos?
Yes, yes, we've been through the memos, thank you. We need some time to go through everything and maybe Paul has something to say about that, but we have read them.
No, I understand this is a complicated project. It's not, those issues are not going to be resolved overnight. I just want to make sure that you have what you need to keep moving forward. And I know that it's hard to move forward right now with these big picture issues being up in the air. But if you have questions, issues with those, there's a planning memo too, right? So you have them, you're, you're looking at them and you understand the issues that are going to be addressed, including SECRE.
Yeah, what is, yeah, what is the sequence, Dan and Bill, in terms of like, because I understand we have to declare ourselves the agency, like what are the, some of, what are the, some of the, what are the steps that we have to go through?
Depends who the lead agency is. I'm not quite sure what the trustee's role would be just yet, but-
I think they are going to give the lead for the SECRE.
Yeah, my understanding from Valerie-
Yeah, Valerie's, it says-
Valerie's recommended that we declare ourselves-
Recommend that if the village board intends to be lead agency, it's recommended that, if the village board intends to be lead agency, it's recommend the planning board declare it's intend to be lead agency, she says.
And just for SECRE?
Just, this is for SECRE, right. And-
Because in this zone, I know both boards have, they get their shot at it, right?
Yeah. We're, we're just recommending-
Ultimately, they're going to have a joint public hearing for it.
So we need to wait for the board of trustees to ask us to be lead agency for SECRE?
Or can we go ahead and-
No, I think you're way, you're not even close yet.
Okay.
I think-
Okay.
You need, I think, you need to develop a little bit more of a, of a project so that you know what you're looking at.
But is that true for the purposes of declaring what the lead agency is? Who the lead agency is going to be?
Just in case something substantial changes, that may, yeah.
Oh, no, will change substantially, but I thought the, the business of declaring ourselves lead agency was kind of a technical dimension of the, like a lead-
That happens at some point, that happens at some point, but again, if it's, if, since it's initial, you know, it's first, first time in, yeah, but it's going to be coming back again. And you're dealing also with the trustees as well. It's a decision that can be made there, yeah.
Okay. So, looking at what we're going to see next month, we're going to see, uh, option, other options for layouts and including additional viewing platform and just street views of the options. Does that sound right?
Yes, we can explore different options and show you different 3D studies so they could see how you can view the buildings through the site. We're just giving you a big picture idea of, of what we'd like to do. And so we have only one scheme, but we will come up with other options and happy to do that. And we'll come to you for the next meeting with that. Thanks for your comments. I guess I have a question. I just wanted to know what you mean by, uh, you say it's a gateway, another gateway into the village. Yeah, but do you mean in terms of the type of building that's here and buildings that are here or is the gateway related to the architecture? Or is it more, you're saying a gateway to a view of the river from Livingston Avenue?
Yeah, the view of the river on-
The view of the view.
Yeah, the moment of sort of coming, you know, with-
As you get it.
If you make the turn on the Livingston and, um, you know, the Hudson River should really be, set the tone.
Yeah, I mean, those are designated viewing platforms in the village code, in the, in the view platform appendix. So, and I don't know if you remember when Rudy's was there and you turned, you know, Rudy's was a lot of parking and outdoor space. It was a wedding palace. So, um, you know, there was one building there and you got this incredible, you turned that corner, you got this incredible view.
Yes, I remember.
And I know, I know we're not going to get that back, but we want to get as close to that as we possibly can, given the limitations of the site, what's going to go.
I mean, it, it doesn't mean, yeah, I get, in terms of what you were asking, Christine, in terms of your architecture, I do think, and I know you sort of do it a little bit with the, the way you're laying out the buildings, of having the ends of the two, the two end units kind of, you know, reflect each other in some ways. I do think that, that when, that, that corner, you know, wherever, however you lay out the buildings ultimately, I think that the corner, you know, when you turn the corner and you have this view, I think that the building should also, you know, acknowledge the fact that there's this first corner, right, that is anchoring the south end of the-
Of that neighborhood.
Of the site, yeah.
I see. Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, thank you for all your ideas. I really appreciate it. We'll look into them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay, I'll see you next time. Have a good evening.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, is there any other business the board should address before we adjourn? Anyway? Okay, I move that we adjourn the meeting. We'll have a second. All in favor? Okay, thanks, everyone.